The Union County Government Center, I call the June 24, June 17, 2024 Regular Meeting of Union County Board of Commissioners to order. At this time, I would like to recognize Commissioner Williams for the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those so inclined, please bow your heads in prayer. Lord, as we gather here today to discuss weighty business before us as a county board, we ask that you give us comprehension, clarity, and wisdom as we deliberate and make decisions today. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is informal comments from the community. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their names, stating whether they are residents of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A tone may sound at the conclusion of your remarks. A speaker may not yield his or her, any of his or her time, to another speaker. Speakers may not discuss matters which are the subject of public hearings, and they must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatement or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meetings, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk to the board. Our first speaker is Dr. Amanda Stanford.
I'm Dr. Amanda Stanford, and I've lived in Union County for 10 years. I live in Indian Trail. If you've ever read The Little Prince by Antoine Sanex-Burri, you know it's not really a book for children. It was published in 1943 by a pilot exiled from France during the Nazi occupation, who died a year later while on a mission in the skies above Europe. It's a book meant to be read during occupation by frightened parents to frightened children. So if you haven't read it, I will briefly tell you that in the story, The Little Prince leaves home on asteroid B-612 and on his way to Earth meets a lot of different people. And they are described with a frankness that only children possess. At one point, he meets a man who counts the stars and says he owns them. And the Little Prince wonders how someone could possibly claim they own the stars, because that's the difference between children and adults. Children will tell you, you can't own the stars. No matter what you tell them, no matter how many times or how loudly you proclaim it, you can't own the stars. Mecklenburg raised their taxes, as did Wilmington, Fayetteville, Wake, and Durham. This is just an unpleasant and necessary part of being an adult. We pay taxes, and we want those taxes used responsibly. I think that most people here would agree that if a school gets public money, they should be held accountable for it, which means a level playing field for all of the schools in Union County that get that money. We also want to see building companies held accountable when they take advantage of people who buy from them. When building companies are found liable, they should be held to account and restricted from building in Union County again. I think people in Union County want transparency in their local government, and for you to remember that you represent all of us. Antoine Sanex-Burri did not live to see how immensely successful The Little Prince would become. It has sold an estimated 140 million copies and has been translated into over 500 languages. Sanex-Burri died in that mission above the skies of Europe on July 31, 1944, at the age of 44. He was too young for World War II and really too old for World War, sorry, he was too young for World War I and really too old for World War II. But the lessons he left behind in The Little Prince still speak to children and their parents, and the fox's lesson is one of my favorites. The fox asked The Little Prince to tame him because he was lonely, but the fox said, "If you tame me, you will be responsible for me." It's a reminder that, like it or not, we are responsible for each other now, and what we do now, it matters.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Burroughs.
My name is Carolyn Burroughs. I live in the Alden Community, and I've been speaking to you for some time about continuing with the water expansion program. And I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Matthews for bringing it up in the last meeting, and he said it's not in the proposed budget, but it could be if you guys requested it. So I wanted to say thank you, and I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Williams for answering my concerns in my email. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers who have not signed up who wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding Monroe Hospitality Project Overnight to Consider a Step Four Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $940,000 over a five-year period. I will open the public hearing and recognize Chris Platte of the Monroe Union County EDC Executive Director.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Raul, Commissioners Manager Matthews, it's my pleasure to present tonight an incentive for a special project called Project Overnight. The company's name is Monroe Hospitality LLC, and the project is potentially going to bring a branded boutique hotel into downtown Monroe. The hotel is planned to have 80 to 100 rooms, with an upper-scale restaurant, a bar, and potentially a spa. The site under consideration is the former Hotel Joffrey site. If you're familiar, right across the street from the historic courthouse, it is the gravel parking lot right there on Main Street. The project's anticipated investment is approximately $40 million, and will generate approximately 100 jobs. Commercial projects can be difficult at times to really incentivize because they're driven by the market, and so they will come on their own. But when you talk about an infill project such as this, where you're coming into downtown Monroe, there's a lot of hurdles that are there for those projects to really be successful. So it makes sense for us to consider an incentive to encourage this infill project, and really a transformational project for the core of Union County. So the EDC examined our current incentive grants and asked you to consider a Step Four grant, which is what you would normally qualify for that level of investment, but also put some geographic constraints on that because of being commercial and for hotels, limiting them or that eligibility for this grant to downtown areas of our municipalities throughout the county that have a designated Municipal Service District, or MSD. So the MSD-focused Step Four grant for Monroe Hospitality LLC would be in an amount, as you heard, not to exceed $940,000 over a five-year period beginning in fiscal year 2027. The amount of new tax generated to the county from this project is estimated to be $1,176,000 over that same grant period. So based on the anticipated capital investment, it is proposed that the board award an MSD-focused Step Four Economic Development Incentive Grant in an amount not to exceed $940,000 to be paid over a five-year period. The value of the incentive grant is based again upon the appraised value each year as appraised by the Union County Tax Assessor's Office. And so this grant is calculated on the company's projected total investment of $40 million in land building and fixtures, again, over that grant period, and then not less than 30 million. So there is a minimum threshold of 30 million for this project. Based on the potential investment in Union County, the current tax rate, and again, assuming the consistent assessed value with no depreciation, the company is again estimated to pay ad valorem tax of $1,176,000 over this period. Again, the actual tax value coming into the county is based on this assessed value each year, and so it could vary depending on depreciation and other factors. The grant is also contingent upon the company creating at least 10 of the 100 jobs that they potentially could have. The economic development staff have reviewed the details of the project and concluded that it would have great impact to the county via new tax revenue, new sales tax, new jobs, et cetera. It would also be a tremendous benefit to our industrial base in the sense that right now, typically, most of the executive members of those companies or their clients, they will ship off to Mecklenburg, such as the Ballantyne area, to stay. This would give us an option for them to stay locally. Unfortunately, the developer is not here. He had a medical thing come up and could not attend, but I am here to answer what I can about the project.
Any questions for Mr. Platte? Commissioner Merrill?
That's a new pronunciation for me. Platte. Other states or other historic downtown settings that have already moved forward or have this type of project already in place that we could see? Is this a first?
It's a first for us. It's clearly not a first in other areas. I know that there's boutique hotels throughout, like in Cary and Morganton and other places, and Greenville, South Carolina, other places, and South Carolina specifically I know of.
Okay, so that's what I would be interested in knowing. The historic nature of Monroe gives me pause with this type of hotel possibility, and the, if this were to move forward, the loss of parking downtown for people who work in downtown Monroe, losing that parking lot, I think, would be an inconvenience for people that are already circling around trying to find a parking space. I worked downtown Monroe, and it's a challenge. So that concerns me a little bit, and just architecturally, you know, the historic nature does give me a little bit of pause. So that's why I would like to know if there's other projects that we could see to have a better understanding of this request.
Absolutely. We'll get you that list. Again, I wish the developer was here. He would have answers to that. The city of Monroe, I believe, is requiring architectural aspects of the facade to mirror and match in the spirit of downtown. It won't be like a Hampton Inn front. It would be more to match.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, thanks for being here tonight. I've got some questions as well. I happened to watch the Monroe meetings regarding this item, and I've got some concerns also. So you mentioned that this project's to be built at Hotel Joffrey, the original site for Hotel Joffrey.
Yes, sir.
What is there currently, Chris? Because I was under the impression there was an existing building.
No, the current Hotel Joffrey is the gravel lot. So if you're looking along, if you're coming down Main Street from the Government Center, on the left, you'd have the historic courthouse, and on the right, you have a few buildings, and then it drops down into the gravel parking lot. That's the Joffrey site. Actually, the site for the hotel would be actually bigger, so they would look to close Stewart Street as well as take over the Coca-Cola Event Center, which is owned by the same folks that are looking to develop the property. I think the Coca-Cola facility's got some structural problems, so it's probably not long for this world anyway, and so I think they're going to take it and then add some convention space, meeting space within the hotel as well.
The Coca-Cola building, is that not a historic structure?
I don't recall. I'm sorry.
Okay. No, that's okay. I've just got some concern, because you know, the footprint of, as what was described in the Monroe meeting, was 80 to 100 units, I believe?
Yes, sir.
And so with something like that, my questions would be, you know, are we going out or are we going up? Okay, so if we're going up...
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think what they're looking to do is a two-to-three story on the facade, and then step back and then go up to five stories.
Up to five stories. Okay, so are we talking about steel or are we talking about mass timber here? You know, because you can go mass timber with up to around three stories or so.
I wish they were here to answer that for you.
I understand, yeah. I mean, if anything, let's just take some notes, because this is information that I would like to have for future discussion. And then the other thing is, you know, coming out of that Monroe meeting, I believe that the developer had stated that, you know, he wanted to make this the nicest hotel between Ballantyne and Wilmington, I believe. It wasn't as exact words. I could have that wrong. And so with that, I've got question marks here regarding, you know, the viability of something like that in downtown Monroe. And so I guess my concern would be, with something like that, if we're talking about something that's comparable to the Ballantyne, for example, then you're looking at somewhere maybe 300 a night. And so I've got some concerns as to whether or not, you know, we could support something like that, meaning the surrounding community. Something else that stuck out to me was, you know, what do the people within the city limits of Monroe think of this project? You know, our landscape, our historic downtown area is a very endearing part of our community, and I've personally heard mixed feelings regarding the support from the people on this. And so I would like more information on that, whether or not any kind of studies have been done, any kind of comments have been, you know, received regarding the community's interest there. As far as the parking is concerned, I think that Commissioner Merrill brought up a great point regarding the lack of parking potentially with this. But I've got another concern regarding the parking for this project. So if it was to come to fruition, you know, what is the answer for parking around the downtown area? Are we talking about a parking deck? Are we talking about, you know, a parking lot? Is that incorporated into the footprint of this building? You know, how are we accommodating for something like that?
Yes, I do believe there is some parking underneath that will happen for the people staying in the hotel, but I'm not sure to what extent.
Okay. All right, yeah. I mean, if we can get some answers on that, perhaps I think that would be helpful for this board to make a decision.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions of the director?
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. It appears no one has signed up at the speaker at this public hearing. Is there anyone here that hasn't signed up that wishes to speak? We have no speakers signed up, so I will close the hearing at this time. Next on the agenda is item 24393, recognition of lifesaver award recipients. I will recognize Deputy County Manager Patrick Nyland for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems like every meeting, if not every month, we get to do one of these, and I don't know if that's fortunate or unfortunate, but it's a testament to the incredible employees we have here at Union County. Typically, when we do these, it's a Union County employee that has helped somebody in the public, a vendor, a citizen, something like that. And when we got this one, we had to read it twice, because it was our own employee that our other employees saved. On April 18, Craig Greenley was eating at a restaurant. He's an inmate health nurse supervisor. He was eating at a restaurant with four Sheriff's Office employees when he began to choke. And because those four Sheriff's Office employees were there, they were able to clear his airway and revive him. And it's just, it's incredible that they were able to save one of their own. And what's even more incredible is that Craig was the first recipient... And what's even more incredible is that Craig was the first recipient of the Union County Lifesaver Award. So it's just, it came full circle, and we couldn't be more proud. So the four deputies or four employees that were here to recognize tonight are Lieutenant James Dennis, Lieutenant Matt Winfrey, Sergeant Steve Hancock, and Sergeant Jody Rutledge. And I'd like to invite the sheriff to say a few words, if you would.
If you notice in those introductions, that's the command staff portion of it, all of them working the jail. So they're the same officers that are out here, they're all certified law enforcement officers that work in the jail, do the job every day for the citizens of this county and the jail staff as well. So we're very proud of all they've done. We think it's important that they be acknowledged, as you do, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate all they've done for our county.
Chairman's gonna have to sort of think it for you. On the count of three. One, two, three.
The next item is consideration of the agenda and consent agenda. Are there any motions regarding requested revisions or amendments to either the consent agenda or the business agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Bobb.
Yep. I move that we remove appointments to the Union County Land Use Board from item 24-412, appointments to boards and committees with such appointment to be considered at a future meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Hill.
I have an addition to the business portion of our agenda. I would like to add an item for response to the Union County Chambers blog post from 61724 to business, please, sir.
Any discussion on the vice chairman's motion? All in favor of the motion indicate aye. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir. I will make the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended, indicate by, or any discussion, excuse me, indicate by aye? Aye? All opposed? We are now at the business portion of our agenda. The first item of business is item 24-423, consider, consideration of a Step 4 economic development incentive grant for Monroe Hospitality Project Overnight in an amount not to exceed $940,000 over a five-year period. I will recognize Chris Platte, Monroe Union County EDC Executive Director for this item.
Any other questions I can answer, otherwise?
My presentation's done.
Any other discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, you know, I've got some grave concerns here regarding this item and making a decision per se on this tonight. You know, I think that, you know, during the public hearing portion, there were a lot, there were many concerns that were expressed. Yeah, I would be more in favor of, you know, potentially tabling this item for, you know, discussion at a future date when we can get some more information regarding those questions that we had. And also, I'm hopeful that we can also facilitate some more coordination and discussion with the city of Monroe on this as well. You know, as I understand it, you know, City Monroe has voted to approve their portion of this, this project, and I think there's a willingness from this board, you know, obviously, to work with the city of Monroe. But at the same time, you know, I think that there's some valid concerns that need to be worked through. So, you know, I would be more inclined to take a step back on this, potentially table it. You know, if we have to make a decision tonight, then unfortunately, my decision would be no.
Are you forming that in the form of a motion, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we table discussion of this item. That would be item 24-423, Step 4 Economic Development Incentive Grant for Monroe Hospitality Project Overnight for $940,000 over a five-year period to a later date yet to be determined in just a future meeting.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be against the motion, although this is, in a sense, a different kind of incentive in that it's part of a municipal service district. The incentive itself is no different from other tax incentives that we offer other businesses and that we approve regularly. So it's really the same kind of incentive that we approve all the time as a body. You know, in terms of the concern about, well, is this really economically viable? I trust the, you know, the private party here and the market to make that determination, not the board of county commissioners. The private party has decided this is something they want to move ahead with, they like the incentive, they're ready to make the investment, so let's go ahead and work with them. I'm, you know, if they're satisfied in the viability financially of this project, then I am too. So I think we ought to act sooner rather than later on it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, while I can respect Mr. Williams' opinion on that, I think it's also important to understand that this board does not typically incentivize commercial operations like stores or hotels. So this is a bit of a deviation from the norm for this board to take on, and there's a good reason for that. You know, this is a private entity. This is a little bit different project than maybe some others that we have discussed in the past and certainly ones that we will discuss later tonight as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, while it is a different type of project, it's still basically the same type of tax incentive. And, you know, one thing that's been mentioned tonight is the good working relationship, the partnership that the county has historically had with the city of Monroe in offering economic development incentives. And, you know, while I won't say it's a risk to the relationship, you know, if we delay or even worse, deny this incentive for Monroe, let's say there's another MSD opportunity in some different part of the county. Is the city of Monroe, as a partner with the county, going to be enthusiastic about those opportunities when we've delayed or denied Monroe's project? Hopefully not. But I don't really see, again, this is that different from the other incentives that Monroe and the county regularly approve. So I would, again, encourage that we go ahead and act affirmatively on this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams, any other discussion?
I think it's extremely wise with the person not being available tonight to answer questions. I think it's completely understandable that we have some questions that need to be answered. And I am not prepared to support this without having more information, and I think it's completely reasonable to table this until a future meeting.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate aye? Aye? All opposed?
No.
The next matter of business is item 24-389, Union County Public Schools Bond Referendum. I will recognize Assistant County Manager Clayton Voynier concerning this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last month, the board authorized staff to move forward with the necessary steps for the 2024 bond referendum for Union County Public Schools to fund design of a new Partridge High School and design a renovation to convert the existing Forest Hills High School into East Union Middle School. Those bonds totaled around $39.4 million. The board's previously received information on the debt model and the associated tax rate increase needed for the bonds. So the actions requested of the board tonight are basically a continuation of those steps necessary to place these bonds on the referendum for November 2024. So tonight, those actions are to introduce the bond order, adopt the resolution to authorize the issuance of the bonds, set the public hearing, and direct publication of the notice.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to introduce a bond order authorizing the issuance of $39,425,000 general obligation school bonds of the county of Union, North Carolina. Secondly, adopt a resolution of the county of Union, North Carolina regarding bond order authorizing the issuance of $39,425,000 general obligation school bonds, setting a public hearing for July 15th, 2024, and directing publication of notice of said public hearing.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yeah, I'll just say that, you know, I'm going to be in support of the motion. I believe that, you know, this has been long discussed, but this is an item that, you know, I feel like we have to do. We have to do this, you know, for the future of our children and also our children's children, you know, here in Union County. Education is a priority for our county, and this, you know, putting this bond forward shows our dedication and our partnership also with the school system. You know, I want to make this clear, though, too, and I've said this time and time again, that, you know, we have to look at these projects, whether it's new schools or new jails or, you know, other, you know, projects that the county has to undertake. And we have to look at them because, well, we have growth in our county. We have a lot of growth in our county. And so I want to make this clear to everyone, you know, in the audience and also at home that might be listening, that decisions made, you know, in this board or municipal boards are not made within a vacuum. And so when we make decisions regarding the furthering of growth, it does have a price tag, and this is one of those items. So, but, you know, nevertheless, we do owe that to be responsible to our children and our children's children, and I will be supporting the motion because, well, it's simply the right thing to do. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion indicate aye? Aye? All opposed? Next on the agenda is item 24-404, adoption of the fiscal year 2025 operating budget. I will recognize County Manager Brian Matthews for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, again, I want to recognize all the staff that worked on this, our budget director, our budget staff. They did an amazing job in working to get this budget where I think it is the appropriate locate, appropriate where it should be. I'll talk about that in just a minute. We had our budget public hearing on June the 3rd, went over those particulars for it. The recommended budget is $578,159,579. That's across all funds. That includes your general fund, your general debt fund, your education budgetary fund, and education includes South Piedmont Community College, Union County Public Schools, as well as charter schools, your economic development fund, your education debt fund, water and sewer, and solid waste. So it's all funds. I just want to point that out. It maintains a tax rate of 58.8 cents, which is the current tax rate for this fiscal year. And there are some items in there that do enhance what we're doing, but we're also able to maintain our level of service. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the county manager?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, have we received any additional feedback regarding the budget? Anything of note that you have received?
I've not received any feedback on there. I would be remiss, and I don't know if you were going to go there, but I do also want to say thank you to our partners as well, worked well with the South Piedmont Community College, as well as Union County Public Schools. Did an amazing job this year of working together, and we funded 100% of their requests this year. Obviously, there's a lot more that they like, but they understood our constraints, and I do appreciate their efforts to work with us, and we've always had a good relationship with them. I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier.
No, no, I appreciate that because I was going to ask, you know, according to the budget that we've been presented, UCS and our Board of Education has, well, we have fully funded their request.
That is correct, yes, sir.
And I don't know, I mean, you know, we've, in the past, it seems like we've funded portions of the request, but any insight as to, you know, whether or not we've been able to do that in the recent future, or is this...
So last 10 years, we funded their request one time in 2020, fully. Up until that point in time, we were not able to fund their full request in the last 10 years. So once in 2020, and of course, if the budget is adopted today, then it would be a second time in the last 10 years.
I appreciate that, and I think that that's an important note, and it shows the amount of partnership that we have there with our school system and also our Board of Education, and I'm thankful to staff and yourself, you know, for that. So that's really the only question that I have. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Merrill.
I just want to confirm and make sure that the public also knows that in funding fully the school system's request, again, as you said, that sends a significant amount of money to all the charter schools, so they'll be taken care of. But one of the biggest items that stood out to me was that the teachers in Union County Public Schools would get an increase in their county supplement.
Yes, ma'am, that is true.
With this budget.
Yep, not a one time, but a permanent or perpetual increase to their stipend, yes, ma'am.
So I know that's something that has been discussed for a few years, and this year we were able to actually do that in this budget.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. And we appreciate the work with the school board on making that happen.
Very excited news for the teachers who want to be in Union County Public Schools and prefer to be here as opposed to going to neighboring education partners that are offering more. So I just want to commend our staff and everyone that we're finally able to make this county adjustment for those that want to teach here in Union County. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions for the county manager?
Mr. Vice Chair. Yeah, I'll just, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt the FY 2025 operating budget ordinance and the associated tax rates and fees with the caveat that we also direct staff to proceed with the design work for Moore's Park. You know, we've had a lot of folks come in from Indian Trails. We've had Mayor Cullen, we've had Councilman Alser Brooks, and also Councilman Dennis Gay come here and advocate for that, and I think that that would be an important consideration moving forward. You know, we, as I understand it, we can do that in-house without affecting the budget as it stands currently?
That is correct, yes, sir. We could do those designs in-house.
Okay. So I would add that to the motion that, you know, we add Moore's Park design along with the adoption of the FY 2025 operating budget ordinance and tax and fees.
Any discussion on the vice chairman's motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start by just mentioning and perhaps echoing some of the good things that are in this budget. I'm happy to see that we are phasing in, continuing to phase in, some needed changes to compensation, as well as compensation classifications. Within the county, it's important that we remain a competitive employer, because there are plenty of competitors around us that are always actively recruiting, and we want to continue to keep and recruit good employees, and so, I want to applaud that. I want to applaud the additional funds in that same vein that the Office of the Sheriff is getting to make, you know, to start at least, you know, improving their compensation for deputies and improving their position of competitiveness. I'd like to applaud SROs in all the schools. That's very important to all of us, I know, and we, the security of our children is of the utmost importance. I'd like to applaud the acceleration, and it seems from my vantage that it's full speed ahead in terms of the preparation and planning for a regional autopsy center. That is just going to be fantastic, and it's much needed. We know it's been a need for a while, and I'm thrilled that those efforts are getting accelerated. So, you know, and I'm glad that we're being generous to the schools. We've got a school system that compares very favorably to the rest of the state, and I'm glad that we're able to be generous. That being said, that being said, I'm not going to be able to support the motion tonight to adopt the budget for a number of reasons. You know, while we are generous to the schools, we're not very generous to all the other competing needs that there are in the county, and that list of competing needs is ever-growing, and just as important as maintaining a good school system. You know, we need to get a start on putting, you know, at least some sort of start to funding for design for a new jail. Now, I know this Board has before it a decision about the kind of jail that we want to build, and that'll probably happen once I've left the dais here, but we can at least get a start on funding in account to help cover some of those design funds. I think that's very important. We need to show the broader community. We need to show judges and prosecutors and defense attorneys and the sheriff's office that we are serious about getting a new jail, because we don't want a repeat of what happened with the current jail, which was built under court order. The other thing I'd like to mention is, in terms of supporting the schools, it's very likely, you know, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but I would say it's very likely that the state legislature is going to help in that regard. The state economists have come back and said that the state is getting, I think, over $1 billion, in excess of $1 billion than what was anticipated this time last year. And the Senate Leader, Mr. Berger, and the Speaker of the House have both said they're in favor of spending that money on core services, including public schools and public school compensation. Now, you know, what are they going to agree to? Where are they going to meet in that middle? Because I know there's some differences, who knows? But it seems pretty likely that the state is going to be spending more money on public schools, and I understand probably this week, the North Carolina House may have a proposal in that regard. So, that being said, help is on the way for the schools, and I'm glad to hear that, because the traditional arrangement between local systems and the state is that the state provides the funding for salaries. So, to my mind, it would make more sense for us to not take the 2.2 million and approximately 2.2 million that we're taking from unassigned fund balance, not give that to the schools, give that to the multiplicity of needs that we have in other areas, and let the state step in, as it is likely to do. I'll predict it. So, I would say that, you know, and not just, you know, there's a multiplicity of needs, and we know what they are, but I'll mention another one, new industrial park space. You know, you know, all of us up here, I know, and many people are pretty thrilled with the job that economic development has done in representing the county and selling the county to world-class businesses, and they're doing such a good job, you know, that not, in the not-too-distant horizon, you know, some of that industrial park space is going to get used up. It's going to get all used up at some point. So, we need to be looking ahead and deciding, well, where can we obtain and build out some additional industrial park space so that we can continue to represent and sell Union County to world-class businesses? You know, we have a plan for that, you know, industrial park, perhaps focusing in large measure on agribusiness in the southern and eastern part of the county. Let's dust those very good plans off and, you know, start getting serious about doing just that, and see what our most excellent economic development team can do with new industrial park space in that part of the county. So, you know, again, there's some good things in this budget. It's certainly good that, you know, we've maintained the agvorm, the property tax rate, but there are just too many needs that are growing, and not just off in the distant horizon, but they've now walked up to us and they're staring us in the face, and we've got to get serious about making some hard choices. And I just feel like this budget falls a bit short there, maybe more than a bit short. And for all those reasons, I'll be voting no. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Just a brief comment. I think it's great that David brought up, sorry, Commissioner Williams brought up the SROs, you know, included in this budget. Now, we are fully, back to a one-to, well, we're fully to a one-to-one ratio with our SROs, and that's something that, you know, this Board has taken very seriously over the last couple of years to try to provide, you know, those officers at every single school here in the county. You know, as far as the state to step in to help with education, I hope that Commissioner Williams is right. I really do. I would love to see the state step up and provide more help with education, but the simple fact of the matter is, is that, you know, our teachers, our students, they need help now. And so, you know, whereas that may very well happen in the future, we have an obligation to do what we can to support not only our schools, but our children at this point in time. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Merrill.
I would like to echo my support. I was very excited to hear Commissioner Williams' support for agribusiness, and I look forward to discussing that later tonight. This Board has been very supportive of AgTech in our K through 12 schools, AgTech at Wingate University, and I am extremely happy that our economic development team has been such a great partner with our agriculture partners. So, I am very pleased to hear that, because I, too, support our farmers and everything that our economic development team has done over the last few years for AgTech. You know, having, coming from education over the last decade before joining this Board, I think if past votes predict future votes, I will tell you that teachers do not hold their breath to get any type of increase, other than cost of living occasionally, from their state salary, and I think that is precisely why we put in our budget, to increase the teacher supplement, because they have not received the increases that they should have received. There have been many budgets that have been approved out of the House that may not get approved out of the Senate, and I know even our legislators in Raleigh over the past few years have done many bills to increase teacher salaries that were vetoed multiple times in Raleigh, and I think it is, you know, coming with 10 years of experience, in an education budget, I will tell you, they're not holding their breath to get anything out of Raleigh anytime soon, and I just want to commend our staff again for being so willing to help take care of those, our local supplement, knowing that their state salaries are significantly behind. So, I think it's very important that we continue to support our educators, and I'm thankful that we were finally able to make a difference in this particular budget, and I will be supporting the motion for this budget.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Our next matter of business is item 24416, Contract for Construction Manager at Risk for Preconstruction Services for the barn project. We believe Commissioner Williams' request has decided to be placed on business. Commissioner Williams, you wish to address that at this point?
I'm happy to, but I would like for our, to get a presentation on it first. It's on, it's on the, it's on the regular business agenda.
Okay, we have, is Chris Boyd here? Or someone in his place?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Boyd is here. We don't have a formal presentation, because this was under consent, but Chris can talk about the preconstruction services if the Board would like to hear it.
Okay, come on up, Mr. Boyd. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. So, this request is for the Board to consider a preconstruction services contract. So, preconstruction services, the initial engagement of our construction manager. Typically, the contract's going to include constructability evaluations, current market pricing, so that means kind of live construction market pricing, any value engineering that needs to take place, and this all takes place before bidding, so this is one of the advantages to delivering with construction manager at risk. In addition, they also present options for different types of construction, construction sequencing if there are some difficulties in the construction type and different types of site work, or options on site work. They also work to develop schedule. They're also responsible for pre-qualification of subcontractors and the ultimate bidding, and they hold the contracts once they bid all those bid packages, typically anywhere from 15 to 25 different bid packages for each project. So, this request is for $87,515. That represents 1% of construction cost. Industry standard is anywhere from 1% to 2%, so we fall within the industry standard on the fee. So, I'll open it up for any questions that you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, can you speak to where we started in terms of the original design for this barn facility and what the original cost was?
Yeah, so, the original budget was $11.8 million is what's currently budgeted. It was planned to be about a, up to, or approximately 30,000 square feet. That was the initial look at program needs. We're currently in schematic design, which is really at the point of trying to, you know, look at what the program needs, verify the program needs, size the building appropriately, and then start putting a price on what that equals. And so, right now, the project is over budget, given at the 30,000 square feet. There have been some adjustments to move that number down to 24,000 square feet, but it really is a different kind of calculation, because we're looking at using some external cold storage, and that doesn't count towards square footage. So, it's a little bit less than 6,000 square feet of external storage, so you're really at the same 30,000 square feet, and about $2 million right now, I think that we're looking at as an over-budget situation. We still have a lot of work to do through design, to identify value engineering items. Some of that work's taking place, but it's not complete, so there's still a lot of work to do from that perspective.
Commissioner Merrill.
Do you feel that through value engineering that the team would be able to get closer to the original budget, or is it just because the construction market and the supply chain and the construction industry in general, is that's just where we are? Or do you feel like the value engineer will get you back closer to the budget? And what year was that budget established?
I didn't put the budget together, but I think that was, do you remember when that budget was put together?
This project's been talked about for several years, and I think it actually goes back pre-COVID, that we started talking about the concept. So, there's been variations of this project. I think the 11-9 was set toward the middle of last year, when we kind of got, when we got the state funding, we had the final large dollar amounts and started moving forward with projects. Sometime in the fall of last year is when we started moving forward with that 11-9. I've been involved in the project with the design team, so I think I can take some of those questions. To answer your question, we have to get back to that budget. We are exploring other revenue opportunities on consent tonight. There were two grant opportunities that can help us purchase some of the equipment, some of the coolers, some of the freezers paid. So, we are looking for every opportunity to supplement with external dollars, but if we can't find those, we will get back to the budget. We've also asked the state delegation for possible additional funding for this. We haven't heard back one way or the other. They haven't said no, but they haven't said yes yet, so that'll be as budget discussions progress.
And I will say, ultimately, it's my job to get it in, within budget. So, you know, our department will work with designers and the construction manager to get it within budget, and if it is supplemented through any of those other funding mechanisms, we'll be able to incorporate improvements if necessary.
I'm completely confident that you can work a schematic to get to that. I know, you know, my background's in architecture and project management, and I know a lot of our newer schools that were built in the early 2000s, you can go ahead and get your core and everything set, and you could have future expansions made if needed and when the time comes, and so, I just want to thank you for the work you're doing. Same goes with your team, you know. The construction market is difficult right now, post-COVID, so I look forward to seeing what you bring back to us, but I am extremely excited about this project and fully support this for our agricultural partners in Union County, SBCC, Union County Public Schools. I see President Rhett Brown here tonight. This is a phenomenal project that our economic development team has spent countless hours and years putting together, so thank you for what you're doing and knowing what the goal is for the budget.
Any further questions for Mr. Boyd? Any further questions for Mr. Boyd?
Um, I would like to um make the motion to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent um with this agenda item and move forward with construction management um bidding process.
Any discussion of the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll be voting against the motion. Um, there are a number of aspects to this barn project um that, uh, to me, raise some pretty significant concerns. Um, and it's not just that um we're looking at a smaller facility for more money. We may or may not get grant funds, who knows? But, you know, this is the type of project that departs pretty significantly um from the kind of economic development work that we typically do. And we've got an economic development uh team that does a fantastic job of representing and selling Union County and uh securing um our consent and the consent of Monroe um for uh tax incentives. And we let the the course of that development basically be directed by the private parties who are making the investment. You know, that's that's a successful formula. This departs greatly from it. You know, what this is, is a project that uh requires somebody, you know, to run it. And, you know, uh, you know, anybody in in the the food services, food manufacturing, the food processing business knows that it's it's pretty intensive, it's a heavy lift, and it's not something that, you know, we have experience doing, that economic development has experience doing, that the county has experience doing. Uh, yet here we are, you know, uh, wanting to to do this sort of project. And um, you know, I think it's a mistake. It's it was also a mistake uh for us as a board to commit funds to it before we even had a business plan. I mean, typically, you start with a business plan. You know, you gain agreement, you secure the funds. Uh, but we did that in kind of a different order. Um, and um, so I think, uh, you know, we don't even know the type of entity that's going to run this thing. You know, I've heard, well, it it might be the county. Uh, it might be economic development. It might be some new entity that we create. Those kind of fundamental, you know, uh, entity decisions, they need to be made at the start of the process, not once you've already uh expended funds and committed to doing it. Uh, so again, that seems uh kind of done in reverse order uh from uh what best practice would would suggest that you do. Um, so, you know, I would much, you know, I'm a I'm a big believer in agribusiness. I I agree with Commissioner Merrill that, you know, we ought to, we need more of it. You know, Union County is well-positioned uh to continue to be and and to be an even bigger uh presence in agribusiness. Uh, but I think the way you do that is not by taking economic development funds that were intended for the Wingate area and the the southern and eastern part of the county for an industrial park and and move those instead to this specific uh barn project that's going to require uh, you know, us to run it or somebody to run it. So um, you know, I'll I'll be voting against the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for uh those comments. Commissioner Williams, Vice Chairman Helms.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Chris and and also Mr. Platae, seeing as how you're here, um, maybe you can speak to some of this as well. Um, but we've got multiple partners here in this barn project, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you mind, do you mind stating, you know, who our partners are, just for clarification purposes?
Yeah.
There there are several partners, uh, obviously Union County, the town of Wingate, Wingate University, uh, and economic development have all played a a pretty crucial role in getting this project to this point.
And when you say economic development, are you, uh, who who exactly are we referring to there? Mr. Deputy County Manager?
Uh, I'd say Chris Platae and Rachel Holtzman have done a a lot of research. Um, they've gone done site visits, looked at similar facilities, um, looked at the need for something like this. So they they've provided a lot of valuable information and guidance throughout this this process.
So our economic, our economic development committee, as represented by Union County Monroe, still supports this project?
Um, they have voted to actually withdraw from this project at this point in time.
Okay. Um, now, I'm not a part of the Economic Development Committee, uh, but as I understand it, there was a meeting last week. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And the um, there was a motion to essentially withdraw support for this for this project. Is that also correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
And who was in, who was in the majority as far as the Economic Development Committee making this decision?
Do you mean who voted one way or the other? Uh, you had four members voting in favor of the motion to withdraw and two voting uh in opposition. Uh, those were made up of representatives from the city of Monroe and Commissioner Williams.
Okay, so as I understand it, um, the city of Monroe would entail uh city manager Mark Watson, Mayor Robert Burns, and also Councilman James Carr. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So a- at this point, you know, with our Economic Development Committee pulling support for this item, um, where do we go from here exactly? How does that impact the future of this project?
So as as far as the project is concerned, the county is, and then that depends on the direction the board gives on this particular item. The county is still moving forward with the project. Again, we still, we have partners in Wingate University, town of Wingate, also the state, which has given us five million dollars for that. So unless the board tells us anything different, the project will continue. Um, but as the decision came from the EDC board, uh, we would no longer have the expertise and the effort by their staff in helping us with making this come to fruition.
Thank you. Um, Brian, I appreciate that. And, you know, that's truly unfortunate, too, um, because, you know, we've got great partnership there with uh with Mr. Platae and his team. Um, a que- question about the involvement there with the city of Monroe. Um, has the city of Monroe pledged any kind of financial support for this project?
Uh, no, sir, there are no funds from the city of Monroe for this.
So if I understand this correctly, then um, you know, one of our city commissioners, as well as three representatives from the city of Monroe, voted against supporting this project. Um, and at least for the city of Monroe's standpoint, where they have no financial interest involved, just outward support of the project? Is that, am I understanding that?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, you know, I'll be honest with you. I I'm I'm very discouraged um at a minimum to to hear that. And um, and I'm discouraged for, well, a number of many reasons, um, a number of reasons. So, you know, we we've talked about this project for, at least as far as I'm aware, since April 3rd of 2023. This project has been discussed at least three times in open session. Um, the first uh time that I can recall was April 3rd of 2023. Um, and this board, this board voted three to one, you know, to proceed uh with the barn project. It was later put on consent agenda. There was an item regarding the barn project on May 1st of 2023, where this board voted four to zero on the consent agenda to support an additional barn incentives. And then most recently, on July, or I'm sorry, January 16th, 2024, this board voted four to nothing, you know, to, again, support the barn project. I I want to make something clear. In in the role that we have as commissioners, there are very few opportunities that I see where we have just that, an opportunity to support the things that are crucial and important to Union County. Um, you know, agribusiness is certainly one of those. Agriculture is certainly at the top of that list. But there's other elements to this particular project. There's other, there's other elements, uh, including education, uh, partnership there with Wingate University. Uh, we've got, you know, our folks there at SC State, you know, helping us out with this. Um, you also have a partnership with small business. You know, the whole premise behind this is to help, you know, further small business plans. You know, and and listen, I said this a time, I said this a few times, actually, but during COVID, we saw small businesses pop up. And we saw them pop up a lot of times out of necessity because people were hurting. And those folks, a lot of times, couldn't further their business in initiatives. They couldn't further them for a variety of reasons. You know, maybe they didn't have a commercial kitchen. Maybe they didn't have a prep area. Maybe they didn't have cold storage. There could be a number of things. But to me, this project is at the heart and soul of Union County and what this county has come from, what we began with, and where we are today. And I'm, for one, infuriated, infuriated by what we have seen here with our partners in Monroe and also some of the other folks that may maybe even sit on this board. Um, how they would not represent the will of this board with, out of three different discussions, one dissenting vote in three separate discussions that this board has had.
Mr. Chairman.
I I'm not, I'm not finished. So with that, um, I would ask Commissioner Merrill to to reconsider her mo- in favor of another motion. And that motion would be, at this point, I've lost confidence that Commissioner Williams should sit on the EDC. And I would move that we would suspend rule number 32 of this board's uh policies and procedures and that we consider removal of Commissioner Williams from the Economic Development Committee, Monroe and Union County Economic Development Committee. Um, and then we also entertain nominations to seat another appointee from this board.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Merrill.
Um, I am um open and agreeable to Commissioner Helms' motion just made. Um, I just want to say, um, I, when I ran for this office, one of the things that I ran on was supporting our agriculture communities. Um, my mother's family were all farmers. My dad's family, all farmers. Something um Commissioner Stoney Rushing and I often shared um common interest in was agriculture. And I feel, I almost feel like we're being punked tonight because somehow or another, we have confidence in moving forward with a boutique hotel in downtown historic Monroe. But we do not support moving forward with the barn project in Union County. Um, I'm dumbfounded and I'm disappointed. It's something that we have talked about for years. Um, and I will, I will be in support of Commissioner Helms' um motion.
I'd like to say that the Monroe-Union County Economic Development Commission, I mean, they're just a great group of people. They have done a great job for Union County. Um, and that's a partnership between the city and the county. Now, I still have confidence, and I was at that meeting last week, but I still have confidence that we can work together with the city and somehow come to an agreement that we can all live with, whether we're talking about the barn project or the boutique hotel in downtown Monroe. Um, I really think we can do that. Uh, we just have to kind of put some things aside. I think we can do that. I just think we can, uh, it's going to take a little time to move forward. Uh, Commissioner or Vice Chairman Helms, I'd rather not move forward with the removal of Commissioner Williams uh from that board at this time. And I would like to, uh, we've got other meetings coming up with the EDC board and with uh the members of that board. And I want to make it clear, now, the members of the EDC that work for them, they they did not vote on this, of course. It was the Board of Directors, which I am one of. And and I do admit I was somewhat taken aback by the vote. But I still believe we can all come together and come up with something that we can all live with that will benefit the city of Monroe and that will benefit Union County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, since you're on the Board of Directors, um, can you um explain? I know, I know a few names have been mentioned. Can you tell us who all sits on the Board of Directors? Who voted to withdraw and who voted um to stay?
It was, it was a four to two vote. Um, uh, Mayor Robert Burns, city manager Mark Watson, city councilman James Carr, and Commissioner David Williams voted to withdraw. County manager Brian Williams and county chairman J.R. Ral voted against that, to not withdraw.
Brian Matthews, right?
Uh, I'm sorry, there's a lot of Bryans around here. Brian Matthews, the county manager.
So there is not a tiebreaker? This is a six-member board and and there was, there's, was anyone absent?
I don't, I don't believe anyone was absent. Mr. Matthews, is that right?
That's correct. The the board was, it was designed specifically to have a balance three and three.
I got you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
My motion stands.
Uh, Commissioner Baughman, do you have a word?
Yes. I would, I would stand in favor of Mr. Helms' motion, Commissioner Helms. Nothing, nothing personal, I promise you. But I think ag is a key component to our economy. Um, I think there's no better way in the world to grow up than to grow up on a family farm. And um, the life that affords young children, the life lessons. Um, I had the benefit of growing up on a family farm right here in Union County, and it's no secret that the family farm seemed to be on the decline and that farms are getting larger and larger. So that, I mean, when we were, when we were in school, every young man knew how to drive a tractor, everybody. And I hired the president of a local FFA school, the of FFA chapter, and he had never driven a tractor the other day. So I think, I think to promote agriculture, small level benefits to county. I do think that this barn project, I've I've met with Rhett Brown. We've, we've, we've talked for, at Lent. Um, I think this may very well be the vehicle by which we seek out those crops where families can actually make a living, make a decent living, a solid living. Um, poultry, for example, I think poultry is a, is a large opportunity, pasture poultry. And from what I understand, you can take the kill vehicle, the processing vehicle, kill doesn't sound very nice, the processing vehicle out to the farm, uh, slaughter the birds, come into the facility, package, and go to market. There, there's great opportunity there for a family farm. So I do think, and again, it's nothing personal, but I do think we need someone who understands agriculture and will represent agriculture. So I would stand in in favor of Brian's motion. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I ask, did you reconsider your motion as opposed as a, in regards to removing Commissioner Williams from the EDC board?
Mr. Chairman. I I understand and I appreciate that request. Uh, but I think it's very important that we understand that the board has been very, very clear with our direction regarding the barn pro- uh project. Uh, we've been clear about it on April 3rd, 2023. We've been clear about it on May 1st, 2023, and we've been clear about it on January 16th, 2024. Um, and I think it's very important to understand, too, that when you serve on um, you know, boards such as this, um, that to take in consideration of the the will of the board is important. Um, I I think that we, there's a place for everyone's opinions, and I certainly respect Commissioner Williams' opinion. But with something like this, that has been at the heart of so much discussion, I think that the proper thing to have done would have been to consult the will of the board. Commissioner Williams asked for this item to be pulled from consent before...
Commissioner Williams asked for this item to be pulled from consent before the EDC meeting, before this vote happened to pull Monroe's support from this project and ultimately Mr. Plata's team. And so, you know, with that, I have nothing personal against Commissioner Williams, but I think that the only way for us to move forward is to appoint someone different for that committee. And although I certainly respect you, sir, and I respect your opinion on that, my motion will stand.
Okay. I, I would just want to go on record that I do support the barn project. However, I do not support removing Commissioner Williams at this point.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Merrill.
This is a tough one. But then again, it's really not a tough one. We're all appointed to different committees, and we work in partnership with other agencies, other municipalities, other elected officials in and out of Union County. I sit on boards with other commissioners from multiple counties. And when Commissioner Williams asked to be on this committee, it, it never occurred to me that he would violate his own votes in support of the barn project here, but then make the motion to not support it and withdraw it there. I, I was, I was very shocked when I got the phone call that, that support had been withdrawn for the barn project. I, I, again, I, I just could not understand what went wrong. And if we are going to serve on committees, we have to represent this elected body. And, and I have lost confidence that that can be done after last week's vote. So I will be in support of Commissioner Helms's, you know, just very uncomfortable motion, but we can't, we can't move forward as an elected body and have this type of vote occur again without our knowledge.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to make sure that some items in history are represented accurately and fairly. The very first time the barn project was presented to this board, I voted against it. I was the lone vote against it. The reasons I gave remain good reasons today. You know, items that show up on consent, you know, I didn't decide to take any action on the barn project until I learned to my dismay how much more expensive it was going to be and how much less square footage it was going to be. Nor did I understand that fundamental, basic questions about, well, what kind of entity is going to run this thing, haven't even been decided. We're going to pledge millions of dollars to the barn project. Oh, it sounds like a great idea. You know, we didn't have a business plan when this board just said, yeah, let's go, let's charge ahead, full steam ahead. And, you know, in, in terms of representing this board and representing the best interests of Union County, I do that every day. This, the EDC is a separate entity, just like this one, you know? And I bring my independent thinking to that board service, just like I bring independent thinking to this board service. And I exercise my obligations of duty of care to that board, just as I do my obligations of duty of care to this board. I feel like I've represented well Union County on the EDC. I've represented Union County well on this board and on the other boards I serve. Whatever this board decides, it decides, I, you know? But dissent and disagreement and independent thinking shouldn't be punished. And sadly, we've seen too many examples of that. We saw it last year. We're seeing it again tonight, based on the item that was requested be added. It sounds like we're going to see more of it. Bringing down the hammer on those that might dissent and disagree with the board majority. So that's, I, I wouldn't say I'm infuriated. I wouldn't use that language, but it's disappointing. It's disappointing, and we're seeing yet another example of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I think, I think we learned of exactly that from independent thinking, representing Union County government. That is exactly what happened last week. Independent thinking where, I mean, Mr. Williams was trusted to be there to support this project, and if he had these concerns, he wouldn't have voted at least three times in support of the barn project, the three most recent votes. And, and if he had these concerns, he's had at least a year and a half to work that out with economic, with Chris Plata and his team. And I, I felt blindsided when I learned that support had been withdrawn for something that had been so well-vetted with the business plan and multiple partners in our community. So I stand, I, I'm disappointed. That's fine. There's plenty of disappointments, but I don't think the position has been accurately
Any further discussion?
You know, one more.
Mr. Merrill.
I would like to ask Mr. Boyd, if any money has been spent, have we moved forward on a design?
We have.
And have we finalized, have you exceeded the $11.8 million budget? Have you, have you spent that?
No, absolutely not.
Have you made the decision?
No.
To exceed the, the budget?
Yeah, the only commitment in funds has been the design contract.
Okay. So thank you for, for sticking to the parameters. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion indicate by aye? All opposed?
No.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
At this point, I would like to make a motion that we make a nomination to fill the, the seat there on the EDC, Union County Monroe Economic Development Commission. And I would like to make the motion that we appoint Commissioner Merrill to that, to that position.
I'll just say, I certainly am not opposed to Commissioner Merrill being on that board. Me and Commissioner Merrill serve on other committees together. Of course, I voted against that motion because of the removal of Commissioner Williams. So that would be my only concern as far as this motion goes. Any further discussion? All in favor of the, of the motion by the Vice Chair to appoint Commissioner Merrill to the EDC Board, indicate by aye? All opposed, indicate by nay?
No.
Correct. Okay, we, we need to go back and vote on the barn project or on that matter itself. Any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I believe you had a motion on the table and then you had a substitute motion. So I think at this point, you, you need another motion on the table to approve or disapprove that item.
I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove the barn project, or the contract for construction service or construction manager in regards to that project.
Yes, I, I stand by, I stand by with my original motion to authorize the county manager to negotiate and execute an agreement substantially consistent with this agenda item for a construction management process.
Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion. You know, again, I, I believe that when you look at this project, it incorporates everything special and good about our county. And, you know, there's risks with everything that we do. There's risk with every single project that we entertain. This certainly has risk as well. But I, for one, would rather, I, I would rather assume risk on a project like this that brings together all of these different elements than I would perhaps other, you know, projects that we may entertain. So I think that's worthy. I stand by my support for the barn project, and I want to see it succeed. Thank you.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye? All opposed? Next on our agenda is Item 24412, appointments to boards and committees. The positions to be filled on these boards and committees have been advertised in accordance with the board's rules of procedure. Applications have been received, and information regarding the vacant positions may be found in the background provided for this item. Looks like the first one is the Agricultural Advisory Board. Mr. James Howey and Mr. Gerald Mangum have terms that expire on June 30, 2024. Mr. Howey and Mr. Mangum have applied for reappointment. There are no other applications that have been received. I make the motion that we reappoint James Howey and Mr. Gerald Mangum to those positions that they currently sit in. Any discussion on that? All in favor indicate by aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Also, the Central Atlanta Workforce Development Board, they have a representative that is resigning on June 30, 2024. This vacancy is an unexpired term that ends on June 30, 2025. Scott Panagrosso has applied for, to fill this vacancy. Central Atlanta is requesting the nomination of Mr. Panagrosso to fill this vacancy. No other applications have been received. I make the motion that we appoint Mr. Panagrosso. All in favor, any discussion, I'm sorry. All in favor of the motion indicate by aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The Land, Union County Land Use Board was removed off the agenda until a later time. We'll move to the Region F Aging Committee. There are two vacancies for regular members that exist on this committee, one of which is an expired term ending June 30, 2025, and one vacancy for an alternate member. These vacancies have been advertised and applications have been received as follows. Kathleen Demansky, she currently serves as an alternate but is eligible to move to a regular member and could fill the unexpired term that ends June 30, 2025. And Patricia Kinley currently serves, is serving as a regular member and is eligible for reappointment. There are no other applications that have been received. Any discussion? Well, excuse me, I'll make the motion first to accept those and appoint those. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye?
Aye.
All opposed? No? Now we have county manager comments from County Manager Brian Matthews.
Mr. Chairman, there's...
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, there's that one other addition to our business agenda regarding the chamber.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. All right, Mr. Vice Chairman Helms, you address that. I believe that's what you brought up, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I wanted to bring this up. I wanted to add this item. I, I know that many are familiar with, with the chamber's recent, you know, blog post dated June 7, 2024. I'm of the opinion that this could be a little bit misleading in the way that the chamber is portraying our wastewater capacity and its, and also its effect on development in the county. And, you know, I understand that the, the chamber advocates for its, for its members, but I think that, you know, we must also emphasize that it's important that Union County, or in Union County, that the community receives information that's true and accurate and, and tells the whole story so that we're not misleading our folks. So it's the county itself that is best positioned to provide, you know, accurate information regarding sewer capacity. And, and my hope is, is that what we can do is, is we can direct our staff, our legal team, to provide a written response, you know, to the chamber, potentially correcting any kind of inaccurate information and providing, you know, a full, more informed, you know, opinion or, or facts, I should say, regarding, you know, wastewater capacity and its effect on business. And so what I would like to do is I'd like to offer my colleagues a two-part motion. The first part is to direct staff to provide a written response addressing and correcting information in the Union County Chamber's blog post concerning wastewater capacity in Union County, including providing the full and accurate information regarding actual wastewater capacity, expansions of capacity made by this board, and its impact on business development. And then the second part of that motion would be to direct staff to make the response available to the Union County Chamber, to the North Carolina Chamber, and any other interested party who desires to have full and accurate picture of the wastewater capacity in Union County, recent increases in that capacity, and the status of economic growth in Union
Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Merrill.
Mr. Chair, I would like to offer a friendly amendment. I will be supporting that motion, but I would also like for that letter to be shared publicly and posted for anyone and everyone to be able to see what was in the letter.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Vice Chair.
I accept the, the modification to the motion.
Any discussion to the motion as amended? All in favor of the motion indicate by aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
It is now time for comments from County Manager Brian Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have one thing I want to make the, the board and the public aware of. Broadband has been a discussion and, that we've had for a number of years. We've put some funds towards broadband here in the county. There has been a program at the state level called CAB, which would, allowed multiple providers to bid on the opportunity to provide broadband in different areas of the county. I am happy to report that for Union County, Windstream has been selected. They will be providing 366 new locations at a total cost of roughly about $1.4 million. We put some funds into that, state puts funds into that, and the provider, Windstream, does as well. It is split in, in two different areas, one sort of northeast and one to the south. We'll have some more details later on, but I did want to report that that is moving forward, and we're really very happy to see that number of, of new locations being served. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to thank, of course, county staff and for all the work they've done on the budget. You know, a budget that big, I don't know if there's ever a budget like that, that you like everything about, but I think overall that they have done a great job putting it together. There's a lot of good things in the budget. I appreciate all the work and all those pages that I read. That's a lot of work. I appreciate you doing that. I certainly appreciate our law enforcement, our firefighters, our EMS workers, our 911 telecommunicators, and all of our county employees, and I appreciate the great job that y'all do. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I was thinking about this earlier, that we don't have another meeting before Independence Day. And, and so first and foremost, I want to wish everyone a... And, and so first and foremost, I want to wish everyone a, a great Independence Day. You know, obviously, Independence Day is, is very important to all of us, and, and so first and foremost, I hope that everyone has, has a great one, but also has a safe one as well. And remember the importance of why we celebrate Independence Day. It's not July 4th, it's Independence Day. So with that, I'd also like to thank staff for all the work that they've done on the budget. And that would be, you know, of course, our county manager, our deputy county manager, our assistant county manager, and all of our finance folks, and, as well as many, many others. So really appreciate the work that you guys have done. I think that, you know, there, there's a lot of good things in that budget, and, and I'm, I'm very happy to see, you know, especially things like the SROs, the, the partnership between UCS and our Board of Education. There is, there's too much to really list, but, but certainly appreciate the work there. And I'd like to, to thank Mr. Chris Plata, as well as staff for coming up and, and helping us with these items here tonight. And I'd also like to thank Commissioner Williams. Commissioner, Commissioner Williams and I, we spar up here, and we don't always see eye to eye. But I want to be clear when I say this, that I do have tremendous respect for Commissioner Williams, and, and I certainly value your contributions to this board, sir. I feel, I feel as though we, we had to make a, a decision tonight. I feel like we had to make some tough choices. But to be clear, none of that is personally directed towards you. And so with that, again, thank you all for being here, and good night.
Commissioner Merrill.
I echo everything Commissioner Helms just said. I too am very appreciative of Beverly Lyles, her team, every department, Mr. Nylan, Mr. Boyner, our county manager. I know how hard everyone has worked on this budget, and I have told lots of people that, you know, we, until I find the money tree, we can't fund everything. But we're doing the best we can with what we've got, and over the last several years, you know, the charter schools, UCS, have not been fully funded. This was their year. And, and, you know, there have been other departments that have been consistently fully funded. And so, you know, we have to spread the love, and I think we did with staff and, you know, with everyone coming together as a team. I think, you know, we did the best job that we know how. And so I just want to commend you again, and thank each one of you for, you know, going above and beyond to, to do what we can in this budget cycle. I too want to say that nothing is personal. I, I have truly enjoyed learning from Commissioner Williams. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. I just, you know, hate that the barn project went the way it did at the EDC last week, and, and it's just something that I, I completely support, and I think there's been plenty of time to vet that project. And, and nothing personal. I have learned a lot from you, and, and I, I hope we can all move past this. Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo the comments of, you know, a hearty round of applause and thanks for the staff and all the work, the heavy lift that's involved in, as we embrace a new fiscal year. You know, the reality of fiscal year planning is that it's throughout the fiscal year. I mean, y'all will have a, a little period here where you get to breathe a sigh of relief, but it's not too long before, you know, preparations and the planning for the subsequent fiscal year begins. So it's a, it's pretty much a never-ending process. I know all of us up here recognize it. This is just the final culmination of it, but I join the, the voices here in thanking, thanking the staff for all their hard work as we approach the new fiscal year. I'd also like to thank the two citizens who came and spoke before us and informal comments. You know, it's always great to see that. Just love it. And, you know, on a positive note, in terms of my colleagues, I don't, I'm not taking any of this personally. I just, I try to discharge my, my duties and my obligations as I, as I, as best I can, and as I see fit, and as my mind and my judgment and my experience directs me. And let me just say, in general, relations among this board have, have gotten better over the last year. I think we can all agree that that's happened, and I'm so thankful. I'm thankful for that, and thankful for those issues where not only have we agreed, but we've enthusiastically agreed. There have been some of those, too, that we shouldn't forget. So that's all good. You know, later this year, I'll be, you know, riding off into the sunset and ending my board service, and some of the good memories and good experiences I share with my colleagues up here, and it's all good. I'm, I'm just fine, just fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Last but not least, Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to thank the staff. I've found the staff to be very helpful and competent, always ready to, to, to help folks, and sometimes I need a little more help than some. I also, I just appreciate the spirit of the board. I mean, this was a tough, sort of a tough evening. You know, we agreed more than we disagreed, but there's, some of those votes are pretty tough, and, and I appreciate Commissioner Williams's words, I really do. It takes, it takes a big man to step up. You know, at, at certain times, it just takes character, and it takes a big man to step up like that. I do appreciate, I appreciate that. And I, I appreciate the wisdom and, and the angle of thought that Commissioner Williams brings oftentimes on, on these issues. The barn project, I see, is very exciting. Of course, my roots run agriculture, and it, I say, I would sort of challenge everyone to take stock in that project, and if we fail, we fail together. That's the way I would look at that, because there's some very competent people working. If we can all pull in the same direction, we may can really accomplish something great. So that's, that's about all I have to say, just everyone be careful going home. Thank you.
That concludes this regular meeting. Thank you for all who attended. I move that the board adjourned. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?